Good morning, Mr. Manager.
Morning.
What are the two things on your agenda today?
We have, uh, first, we're gonna do, um, the legislative agenda, and this is specific to KAC, and then we'll have Brenda Dietzmann talk, uh, about a sheriff's program. So, she will do that after Eric. Eric?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. We were asked about a month ago or so by the Kansas Association of Counties to make recommendations to them as to what they ought to have in their legislative program. We're not quite ready with everything we're going to want, but we are, uh, what you have in front of you is what we're asking KAC to put in their program. Uh, I've met several times with the manager. Jason Locken is here, he's our lobbyist, he's the guy that tells us if something is reasonable and sensible, or well, not as poisonous guy, so any time you wanna jump up.
Yeah, so is Jason, as we, good. We have met with Jason, and he has seen this. And I, and I try to have here, uh, next to us, who is requesting this, uh, or maybe where it came in from indirectly. I tried to left that off on the very last one. Uh, but that, that, and we give the last one last, but that, that was in the KAC, it was in the last year, and we agree with that. So, I'll, I'll take it from the top, though.
Okay.
There's been discussion the last couple of times, we've talked about what our official newspaper ought to be, and other things. Uh, going to, uh, there is legislation that, uh, or there has been legislation in the past that required legal notices to be published on the internet, uh, at great savings to taxpayers. I don't know that that's something that's going to pass the whole state, and, and by the way, all of these, i- if the KAC says, "No, we, we don't wanna do this," it, it, maybe except for a couple of these, we could probably ask that it just be done for Cedric County. But, right now, our preference is that the KAC actually do these things. And one of them is that we be able to publish legal notices on the internet, uh, and save ourselves those publishing costs. Do you wanna take these one at a time, Mr. Chairman, or go through them all?
Sure, yeah.
So, uh, is the commission all right with that first one?
I'm fine with it. Any objections?
I have no objection.
Uh, the second one, it came from our county treasurer, uh, and I don't know if she is here yet or not, uh, but Linda has requested that, uh, she not have to be sent, not have to send out, uh, property tax bills and personal property tax bills that are less than ten dollars, uh, 'cause it costs more to process that than what we collect. But she also wants permission through the statute, any statutory change, to write off those amounts. The number I'd heard, and I, and I'm, I won't swear to it, but the number I've heard of that amount is about fifty thousand dollars a year. But it, it, we spend more trying to collect that type of thing than what we actually get from it. And so, Linda is asking that you all endorse that.
Would it, sorry, would it be an option for us to carry forward the balance and just not process it until there's more than ten dollars?
I suppose that in the statute, you can say that.
May I, I'd like to not put delinquent notices out and not process it till there's more than ten dollars, if that could be.
If that's, if that's the will of the commission, I mean, I think, we can ask the legislature for anything. So, you tell me what you want.
Well, fairness issue, I, I think when you abate it, it's, uh, never issue about
I'd, I have, uh, two, two que- is ten dollars the right amount?
I think that's what she asked for.
Is there, is there a logic behind ten dollars, or do we just?
Well, we already have this ability, uh, on one of these, I mean, I think the real property tax, I think that's already the case. Uh, Brent? Oh, is it the personal that we already have?
The personal property tax, the original amount was five dollars, it's, um, it's written off and not billed. And so she's looking at this, this is the real estate, and it's about a break even for the county in ten dollars.
Okay.
The amount that the county has to bill, and that's plenty, that's enough, I think it'd be a far forward, I think.
Okay, well, that's, that answers the question, good, thank you. But my second question is, um, in response to what, um, Commissioner Howell said, if, if we accumulate this and then, and then add a bill, is there any sort of, um, legality with the fact that we don't bill it for two or three years, and all of a sudden, we send these people a bill, and they say, "Well, I didn't hire you," or, I mean, is there any issue about?
It would be different than, it would be different than what we do now, I mean, obviously. But it, it's not gonna be any legality issue regarding, i- if it was in the statute. Um, but, but I don't know that, that, computer-wise, that we necessarily have the ability to do that.
Okay.
That question's never come up.
As to the equity of saving it up and then hitting somebody, I mean, we ought either write it off or not, seems to me, but I mean, I, it's not a big issue with me, I'm just trying to.
I could, we could amend this to say that if the KAC...
It could be written off and be right to twelve bucks.
Yeah, I know. I know.
We think, I mean, we could have a little sharing of the balance, because we have all, um, the, uh, the one page is will carry forward from one year to the next. About what's closer to length, what they begin to actually link for interest, because the language might be just based on figuring out there would be no interest charge, sometimes under ten dollars, you're not gonna be needing a bill. And then, those can carry forward, then you bill.
Okay.
Here, here it is, provided off or carried forward without interest.
Yeah, okay, I'm, I'm okay with whatever solution this thought has occurred, I mean, we need to do what seems to be equitable and business-like, and if we're gonna tend to, and if accounts too much to mess with, but we're gonna tend to it with interest or not, and keep track of it, and, thing like, we might wanna bill on anything, but, I, really, it's not a big, what if?
So, should we note on here that, that we would like to have the option to do the writing it off or carrying it forward?
That'd be, that'd be fine, I'm, I mean, I...
And I think, I think you would probably hate the thought, especially when they, of course, they, your, your party's gonna pay.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I might not do that, but...
Then again, I can see that happen, if they know that every year, boom, they get ten dollars, and like that five. Right, that's, I think that's a common reason.
So, what's the will of the commission on that?
Well, let me weigh in a little bit. I own some mineral rights out in Gold County, and I get a bill every year for less than five dollars. And I send them a check every year, it's ridiculous, but it's time that they extend the time and effort to, uh, figure out how much my bill is, uh, pay for an envelope, pay for the paper that they printed on, uh, pay for the posties that send it to me, uh, of course, I ask for a receipt, uh, because it's ridiculous to pay less than five bucks every time. So, they have to process that, send me a receipt, uh, it's totally ridiculous that we have bills like this. I think they ought to be written off, and, and it's not because I, 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 I don't wanna pay two dollars or three dollars, whatever I pay, it's the fact that it's costing that county more money to do that than it's costing to, uh, than that they were covered by me paying that little tiny bill. Well, I, I'm fully supportive of this, uh, I don't know if ten dollars is the right amount, the other thing I don't know, I know Commissioner Howell recommended that maybe we accrue that, but then we're gonna have people that are having to track that, whether we've got a computer program, or we've got a reprogram and pay to track that, or we've got people that we're having to sit down and do that. Again, it may be more expensive to try and track it and bill them after three or four years than it is just to write it off. So, my preference, I think, uh, realistically, is just write the thing off.
Well, what about the idea of giving the credit, the option, to choose which, which way is faster, easier?
As long as they choose the least expensive option.
Other commissioners?
Yeah, I, I guess I just want the treasurer to, if, if this is a recommendation, then I'll, I'll just, I'm sure it's really not a big issue.
Linda just texted me that ten dollars is the right amount for essentially, but Brent just explained. So, is the consensus that we would just write it off for the...
I would rather see us carry it forward. I think we've got poli- it was clear policy, just let people know, you can pay it if you want, we're not gonna send you a bill, once you give them ten dollars, we'll send you a bill, and if you don't send you a bill, we won't show you, we will not show you the loan, but if you don't pay, we won't acc- won't accrue you any interest. But let's say it's nineteen dollars, it's worth collecting, so two years, you get nine do- if it costs ten dollars to process, you still get nine dollars worth of revenue to the county in two years. And you write that off, you'll never get that nine dollars. I, I just think it's an equity issue, you know? People oughta, people oughta have fair tax policy, and this, in my opinion, when you write it off below ten dollars, it's, I mean, the reason we're doing this is because it costs more to process that than, than we collect, I get that, so by delaying it till it's worth our time, solves the problem, but abating taxes is something entirely different.
Yeah, I, I think this argument here...
Except we've gotta, if we're going to, uh, keep tracking it, we're gonna have to find out what it's costing us to track it. If we've got people that were paying X number of dollars an hour to do this, and it's, the total cost is gonna be more by tracking it and giving them a bill at the end, it's not a good decision. So, I don't think the five of us sitting here can make that decision, I think we need to go back to Linda and say, "What is the proper, uh, value, what's the proper decision, whether we write it off or we, uh, carry it forward, so that it's best for our overall taxpayers, rather than trying to concentrate on one or two?"
You know, we can also send this up to KAC and say, "Here, here, here's our thoughts on this, we'd like something to, to go forward, ask the other con- ask the other, uh, counties and, and give them feedback, and decide what the general consensus is and how to proceed."
Overall, I think it's a good idea, we just need to find out what the best approach is. And if the best approach is carry it forward, I don't have a problem with that, I, it's just that I wanna know what the expense for that is.
Okay, then I'll, then I'm gonna recommend in here, put in here that we recommend that the KAC decide whether they wanna carry it forward or write it off.
Sounds good. What you got next?
Third item is, uh, providing counties with the same powers that cities now have to abate nuisance properties and to assess the cost thereof, uh, to the property owner. Right now, the cities have this ability to go in and take care of a property that has become dilapidated or whatever, and it's, the neighbors are upset and all that, well, we don't have the ability to go in and do what the city can do. And someone, and I honestly don't remember who, somebody at M A B C D asked us, I think through Justin Waggoner, to include this, so, maybe Tom knows a little more about it.
I, I think they actually, this was, we talked about this last year as well, we have no tool, and we're running into some issues in some of the subdivisions where we have no, I mean, we get a project to a point, and we can't go any further with it, and the problem persists, and it's a frustration of the neighborhood, and we have no solu- other than to spend taxpayer money to go in and abate that, so, that's why this keeps coming up year after year, and, and we'll continue to do so as, as we urbanize, so...
I approve.
I, I, I don't...
You don't?
You know, but, you know, the problem is, because KAC is private support at state level, and it, and it hasn't failed, because, I mean, failed, because as long as cities can be something abusive, I don't know, and it creates problems, and, uh, property rights people, people out the county, kept, or outside the cities, are concerned about this, and they maintain up in the legislature as a facility, where it's a create, uh, I understand we have a few isolated instances, that create a whole nother set of problems and issues, and issues of conflict, if you give them this thing, authority, and doesn't seem to be somewhat abusive and that, so it's based, and the violence of people who live out in that incorporated area, and expect a little more anyway, where people are, but, I think we'll open up a channel, we'll, we'll talk to them.
Other commissioners?
They call us, make sure I don't, make sure they'll go.
I see both, I see both sides of this, I mean, I don't have a, I have a opinion yet.
I know a lot of properties that, um, people call me about that are in the county, and this would be a, a way to help, I mean, not, uh, lease properties in my district that we have no recourse, and then we end up having to send a dumpster out and up the county money, so, it would be nice if we had parity with the city.
What do you think, um, with this one?
Not in terms of the county being forty, but, I, I think Commissioner Randall was not incorrect in, in, uh, the history of, of this issue. You, you will have the property rights, so, you know, it goes to fight that, but that is a thing that we can't overcome. But it, I mean, it will not be, uh, an issue that, that's a wrong one.
Well, if, if that's the case, it's likely KAC won't want to include it.
Yeah, I don't know if that's the case or not, uh, Commissioner.
You might, you might check, have you looked at the current, look at current legislative agenda at one point? I thought they already added it. We, we should, we should look at that. I, I'm fairly certain that it was, or it may be in there now, just maybe you could interview people from where it's at.
I don't have a problem with sending it forwards, uh, KAC, and having them take a look at it.
All right. All right, the next item is, uh, to permit counties to print all tax foreclosure notices in as many different languages as the border county commissioners, any given county deemed necessary. This came up.
I'd like to comment on that, that's really not word, the way I would've worded that, and really, it's not capturing the problem. The problem actually was stemmed from someone who was in the process of losing their home because the communication did not happen. I would like to have the type of a closed loop communication, when someone's about to lose their home, wanna make sure that they understand that something's happening, and although we, we taped something to the front door, they didn't understand what it was because we couldn't read it. So, what I'm asking for is there ought to be some effort to close the communication loop before we, you proceed to a, a tax sale on someone's home.
I thought the problem was the language barrier.
In this case, it wasn't a language barrier. The people did not speak English, they spoke Vietnamese, I have a large, I have a large population of Vietnamese in my district. I know that some of the, some of the comments I already heard is, you know, there's literally thousands of languages written in print, and thousands of languages, I get that, but English, Spanish, and Vietnamese are, are very popular in Cedric County. Having said that, if someone doesn't respond in any way, I'd have to make an extra effort to communicate with them, to make sure they understand their house is, is being processed for, for, for tax sale. In this case, the last name was, it was clearly, you know, an Asian dialect name, and, really what happened was, it was a cultural issue, they didn't understand that, I mean, they paid off their house, their escrow went away, so they didn't realize they were responsible to pay the tax payments directly, they just didn't understand that. And, uh, as a consequence, they, they, they actually did have their house sold out from underneath them, we had to go to court to fix it. Trying to avoid that, again, again, but not property rights, I think that when we're gonna process someone's home for tax foreclosure, and there's a language barrier that's actually in place, I just want us to go through the extra step, and make it, maybe send a registered letter, they've gotta receive that letter, so that we know that they've been notified. Taking that notice to the door is not adequate, and that's what happened in this case, so, I'm not saying we have to publish it in, in five hundred different languages.
Well, no, I'm saying that if this language says that it would be up to each of, each border county commissioners over a particular community...
I know, this is, this is gonna cause a, a political backlash, 'cause, you know, lots of people saying, "We're English only," I get that, I am sympathetic to someone who's a American citizen who doesn't speak English, it's just the reality we live in. But what I am concerned about is that we, we take something to the door and then sell someone's house, that was the process that was followed. That to me is not adequate, I, I think we ought to do more than take something to the front door.
Well, but, uh, I'll just tell you, though, that I think you're gonna run into some opposition from KAC, because some communities have thousands of, of these properties that they would have to do, and so, whatever it is you're talking about, the closing of the communication loop, multiply it by, in this, in this county, by several thousand every year. And so, I don't know what Johnson County would be, Wyandotte County would be, but...
Well, when the gentleman came in and spoke to us about this, he said that in the, in the last few years, we'd had a couple, and said, "Your county would like this." This is a fairly unique issue, it wasn't thousands, it wasn't hundreds, it was a fairly unique...
Well, we had a couple that had a problem, but you, but any notice you'd think we ought to give has to be given to everybody.
Right, I agree, um, it's a complicated issue, but again, in terms of us printing tax stuff in every language and putting every language on the door is not, is not my, is not the answer I'm looking for.
All right.
So, I'm not advocating for that solution.
All right.
And I don't only legislate, I don't show the legislature, legislation needed to enact that solution, 'cause I'm, I don't even agree with that solution.
Well...
I do think we need to solve the problem, and by the way, you use the word permit counties, unless something is mandated or prohibited by the legislature, we have permission to do things. It does tell us we have to do things, or it tells us we can't do things, but, to the extent the law doesn't speak to something, we have permission to, to do things, we feel, again, again, we do have county home rule...
So, we could do this anyway?
We could do this without legislation, if we wanted to, you know, extend an effort to communicate to someone, unless it's prohibited, we don't have a barrier to, to get through. And I don't think the law says we can't do this, so...
I'll, I'll show this as withdrawn, then.
Please withdraw it as is, and we can talk about it later, but this is not the solution I would advocate.
All right, that's fine.
Thank you.
Next item is abolish daylight savings time for the state of Kansas. Sherman Dennis?
First of all, I think daylight savings time's ridiculous, second of all, uh, I was reading after the last time that we sprang forward, that, uh, that is the day of more heart attacks than any other day of the year. And for the more health, well, if they, we care about not causing much heart attacks from people losing an hour's sleep and coming to work early, I, I just think that there are other states that have abolished daylight savings time, I don't know why we wouldn't, but I'm not hard over armed, I just think daylight savings time is ridiculous.
I have a little, I'd like to spring forward and have it go back.
That's fine, I don't care which time we, zone we take, it's just, I don't see any reason to keep doing this every year.
I think you get a lot of support from the average people, I, I think, but it's definitely...
Well, I, I think Jason might remember that Ty Masterson tried to do that, and he had a lot of pushback from, like, the Kansas Chamber because of business, it, regional closing hours and stuff, do you, do you remember that?
Yeah, and I, I think, Commissioner, the point that this chamber, state chamber, was maybe was related to, if you have business in a region, uh, that it created confusion. I don't know how legitimate that is, I'm concerned, that's what I'm...
But you might reach out to Ty and kinda get a background, and get it to the chairman to see if that's something valuable.
And then you move, and it was part of movement.
It was part of movement?
I'm not, I'm not opposed, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, I just remember there was a lot of pushback from business interests.
Well, when they changed the dates for daylight savings time, uh, there was a, a lot of businesses across the nation that opposed that, because airlines had to change their schedules, things had to be republished, there was a lot of things that happened, and there was a cost to business that, um, we, we worked our way through that, and it, it happened, but there was a, there was a lot of controversy at that time, and, and I think the biggest opponent was the business world did not like the change because it, the transition was expensive and complicated and confusing. I do support this on the ballot, on the, on the, uh...
There, there was at one point a, um, major flap over it, because the, the timing of it, the, um, candy manufacturers felt very strongly that it should occur so that on Halloween, it's dark by the time the kids go out and start doing stuff. And so, I don't know if this is spring forward or fallback issue, but, I'm with the candy manufacturers. But what, what do you all want to do? You wanna include this in our request of KAC? All right. Obtain, uh, funding for regional mental health facility. Sherman Dennis?
Well, it goes along with, uh, what we've been working on, on establishing a, a new position for mental health, uh, but, right now, we're shipping people to Larnet, we're having trouble getting folks into Larnet, we're shipping people to Oswatomie, we're having trouble getting people into Oswatomie. This keeps the people local that need it, and they've got family support when they stay local, uh, so it's got tremendous number of advantages for us, and we have a place we could build back here, I think.
I, I do think that, and I guess this is my view, but, I, I was a probate judge for a little while, and, and probate judges handle all the care and treatment, and we just have an incredible number of people in this community who are in need of mental health services. A lot, a lot of those folks unfortunately are in, sitting in jail and in prison, they spend, we spend a lot of money on them, on addiction services and other type of thing, com care. Cedric County is a, I, I think some, at some point, we ought to get the dialogue going with the state on how to, maybe bring some of those state dollars here, and then we contribute our own dollars to it. This, this could probably get that conversation going, uh, and that is something that has, has to happen at some point, at least the discussion has to happen.
Well, I'm just consistent with the motivation to have regional mental health centers, and so, this, this would fit into that, and I think that's what the professionals in that area want, and Tim, you'd have to help us with the language.
I think one change that I'd make is that I would suggest that the, the state be responsible for a regional mental health center in Cedric County, rather than us being responsible for the hospital. We, I don't know that we wanna get into the business of running a state hospital, I would like the state hospital to place a facility here.
So, I'd say let's go forward with the correct language.
I agree. Anybody, any other comments?
How, with that, with that change, I'll make some kind of amendment to this, but we have a consensus that that would be the way to go. And last but not least, this is an item that actually was on... I've got one question on that, Eric, now, this is the KAC, is this for regional mental health facilities statewide, or... Well, and I don't know how we wanna present it, but we need to present it, we certainly have a deal here. But certainly, I mean, that certainly was a context at the meeting we had up in Tefeca last year, was proposal for regional mental health facilities. I have some other communities that are gonna want their own deal, yeah.
Well, and there's gonna be a lot of pushback, 'cause, 'cause part of the discussion was closing some of Larnet, and, and I think that cannibalization is gonna cause a lot of problems for KAC.
Uh, it's hard to cannibalize their system when they're not even...
Right, they have a third on the floor, or, or their positions on there, but it still is removing...
But I, I think the manager's right, we need to position ourselves that we're supportive of the concept of regional mental health centers, and, you know, it'd be a far stretch if Cedric County wouldn't get one, so I don't even know if you have to put that in there, that we support regional mental health centers, I mean, whatever the...
Yeah. I don't think that's a good idea. No, and if they will probably end up having something here.
Yeah, I mean...
I can't imagine nobody wouldn't. All right, anything else on that? Dark store theory, uh, this was actually in the KAC legislative program last year, this is actually, I think, pretty close with their exact language, if not exact language, pertaining to, um, it has the property taxes and the advocacy on the part of some retailers who, uh, value their, their stores as though they were empty and not being used. Is the pressure here? Yeah, there she is, okay. This language just simply says that, that we would oppose the dark store theory, uh, and that the property tax system should reflect current economic realities and fair market value, and that we oppose any legislation to artificially limit or alter property tax valuation. It's supposed to be free mark, or, or fair market value for whoever it is, and for them to come in and say, "Oh, you can't consider these different theories of valuation, you have to do it this way," which is what I think there's maybe an effort towards going. It would cost, uh, I mean, however you're healed about taxes, or government or anything else, I mean, property taxes is something everybody pays, and when somebody reduces their tax bill, it increases everyone else's, and the, it would cost Johnson County probably a lot more than us, but it would cost all of us a pretty good chunk if, if we went to this theory that we value these stores as if they're sitting empty, and I think you all probably ought to take the same position as KAC on that, that'd be my recommendation, but, uh, and, and they did do it last year, so what is the, what are the commissioners' thoughts on that?
I concur, I, I think it ought to be sent up to KAC.
I agree. This statement says we oppose any legislation to artificially limit or alter property tax evaluation. I don't know, just a few years ago, we supported legislation to limit increases in valuation priority, wasn't just commercial, it was, it was residential, I'm not saying, uh...
This is specific to commercial, though. Well, we just listed this language from the KAC's own statement last year. If you want us to take that last line out in our recommendation, that's fine, but.
It was totally in there, I think.
It's probably going to be in there, but I didn't want to get, make it any different than what they already had. But the bottom line is, do you support or oppose these statutory interventions on behalf of deciding how much value somebody has?
Well, since what the intervention is, that's why I'm not, that's the worst, you know, in the past, yeah, we have. That being said, the whole thing was already in the KAC, let's say agenda's really important.
Well, it is right now, but I don't know if I'll go with it again.
Well, I think we're general, general, most forward. Yeah, I think we must. I don't have a problem with that, especially if it's consistent with the language. And they're probably, you know, they're going to massage it anyway, so they're going to try to make it some, I'm sure.
Any objections?
Okay. I have one more.
Alright.
As a result of yesterday, I think we need to give our voters across the state, if their machines are capable of doing it, the option to vote anywhere in their county, rather than have to go to their home precinct every time to vote. Our machines will allow us to do that. It actually enfranchises the voters, because if they go to work in the morning and they can't get back to their polling place, they can vote anywhere the closest voting location. It's going to eliminate a bunch of provisional ballots that we have to hand count. So I think it's got a lot of advantages. So I think we need some wording that allows, if the county has the ability to do it, then be able to.
Well, yeah, I think eventually where we're headed is to have eight or 10 places in the county where anybody can go to those eight or 10 and.
I'd like to chime in on this. I've been talking about this for a couple of years now, and on your idea, we need to make clear that the paper ballots will not be available for every ballot file across the county. Because they only have ballot files for that poll site that those precincts connect with. So if you want to go to a different poll site, you can't, if you want to vote paper, you will not get your, your proper ballot. You're going to get a ballot that the election worker pulled down the box. Unless we have the ability to print ballots, which right now we don't have that ability. So with that caveat, and I think it's a great idea, and our machines do have the capability, but one thing is different about early voting versus election day voting. Early voting has all the ballot files, whereas election day voting, we would have to give up that option. And I'm okay with it, but the people may not, we need to make sure people understand what that actually means, if they were to go to a different poll site. The other thing is called a vote center, and I thought it's, you know, super center, someplace like, but it's called a vote center, where it would be a large place, say town west corner, for example. Lots of parking, and you'd have a lot of machines, a lot of personnel to handle any amount of voting. And apparently, that does require legislation for us to do that.
Well, of course, we are running into more and more difficulty as time goes on, finding churches and schools and whatnot where we can get accommodated. I mean, that's why it's eventually going to go to the system where these little churches are. Of course, they get upset on election day when people are handing out stuff that they don't agree with, and they want to know if they can kick them off their property, and it creates a lot of legal issues for us on election day, but.
And by the way, I think people would still be assigned to a poll site. I mean, we don't give that up, and they can, they could, I think that still has to happen, but, again, under that first thing you brought up there. But we would allow them to simply go over that. If there's long lines or if it's more convenient to go somewhere, they can have that option.
Is there a consensus that we ought to be able to have that option? Does anybody want to do anything about the unaffiliated voter issue, or do you want to leave that alone?
I'm a little bit interested in that, so why Johnson County interprets unaffiliated voter. Up there, they have, up there, they can affiliate and vote on a normal machine or normal paper ballot as processed from spot, versus here, we've got a provisional ballot. Why is that difference? Why is it not normal between the two counties?
I don't know. So there are state issues, all kinds of guidelines, and different election commissioners may interpret them differently.
Well, I was surprised to find out yesterday, we don't process the registration before we process that ballot. So if that's true, and that's acceptable, then I don't see why we can't do it the way Johnson County does it. If there's some kind of barriers to that, I don't know what.
Or we could just require that unaffiliateds have to declare a party if they want to vote the primary by a certain date, like June 1st or whenever.
That's already the law. I'm not affiliated, I'm sorry. Party's switching to June 1st, I'm sorry.
So let them all have to happen on election day. You know, they can declare that a month ahead of time or whatever it is.
Well, aren't some of those decisions down against the party?
Not in regard to the unaffiliated issue. Go ahead. What do you all want to do? Do you want to do anything on unaffiliateds?
Was that form that they have to fill out, was that locally produced or?
I checked it out last night. It's a state form.
It's a state form? The form is, I had a problem with that, because those little teeny tiny boxes that you have to pick out, that you actually had to check for.
If you miss something.
If you missed it, your vote may not count, because was that a little tiny line with little tiny boxes in it?
One of the debates I, I fell into last night was, if they completed a form.
Yeah, we counted them.
If they completed that, if they completed that form, then they were affiliated. And they, again, they could even pick the unaffiliated box, but in that case, at least we know what to do with ballots, right? But when they fill out the form and check for that one line, it's really not, it's not a completed form. And the election workers, at the election office, would never accept that uncompleted form. They would force them to check one of those boxes, but the poll workers didn't do that. So really, it was not a completed form. It was a form that was started, but the election worker.
And of course, at that, if she was here, would argue strenuously with what I'm about to say, but I almost view that as a clerical error, to accept that form when they haven't said which party ballot they want, because we're giving them a ballot. There is a ballot in that envelope, so they asked for one, they just didn't mark the little box.
Right.
But if there's something you all think we ought to do before we go to KAC, let me know, and we'll see if there's.
We just need to be a review of that registration, I think.
Would you like to just do that?
Well, we should talk to Pat at first.
Yeah, I think we need more information.
Alright, that's fine. But you're all in agreement on the vote centers?
Yeah.
Anything else for our KAC?
I have one, based on yesterday's candidacy. I think if someone shows up to vote, and they are less than 65 years old, but they have an expired photo ID for, say, less than two years old, we have to accept it for purposes of voting. It doesn't allow them to drive a car, but it does allow them to be identified that this is the right person. I see a picture, and for purposes of identification, it seems very stringent. Someone's photo ID expired yesterday, and they can't vote today because of that. And we actually would canvass and say, because it's expired, we would not accept their ballot. I mean, it's very stringent. We have to relax that by allowing it to be, let's say, two years expired. Most people whose driver's licenses expire, they'll catch it, and they'll catch that within two years, I'm sure, and it'd be unlikely that someone less than 65 would be disenfranchised.
I guess the question would be, is an expired license a valid license? Because state law is very clear that you have to have a valid ID, so.
Okay, so a valid ID to drive, I mean, license to drive a car, it would have to be.
No, valid ID to vote.
I understand, that's what it says now. I'm asking for a legislative change to say we would allow an expired photo ID, state issued photo ID, for purposes of identification of that voter. Again, the picture didn't, they didn't change their, you can see the picture of them. You can identify that's the right person, but up to a couple of years, it gives them a chance to renew something that's just expired. We had to disapprove the vote yesterday. I was at voter 4-1 on this, but we disapproved the vote yesterday for someone who had an expired photo ID. It may have been expired for one day. We don't know. Presumably, it was a KDL, and if it was expired for a short period of time, I don't know about you all, but I've had that happen where I didn't look in my wallet, you know, and know when my ID expired, and I missed my chance. And so for someone to have that happen and then not be able to vote, in my opinion, is a bigger problem.
I guess I don't have a problem with someone. If you've got a state issued ID, just because it expired yesterday, doesn't mean that it wasn't a state issued ID.
Still shows who you are.
Still shows who you are. All we're trying to do is identify the person that's voting.
I'm guessing the reason they exempt the seniors is that some seniors don't get their driver's licenses renewed.
Right.
Well, they've changed the laws, so that you can have an invalid daylight.
Again, if someone had an ID, they got one there.
We probably wouldn't say it that way, but I'm not the reviser.
Somebody who's not 65 years old, if they're, if they're young enough, they can get out and get that renewed in a couple of years. I think that their looks don't change that much. I wouldn't want to have an ID from someone who maybe was 25 years older than 40 years later, was still accepting a 40-year-old expired ID. That would not make sense to me, but I think a couple of years is reasonable.
I understand the concept, but I can write that out.
Okay.
There's two votes, there's three.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay. Well, that's, any other additions?
I have a couple of comments. The KAC every year has the top two items on their list as Medicaid expansion and tax lid repeal. Now, four of us have talked about our support of the tax lid, and in terms of Medicaid expansion, I don't know, it's got to be a county commission legislative issue. But to the extent that it's on there, I would like to make it clear to the KAC that I don't, I don't support Medicaid expansion, and I don't really want that on the top of their list. And I don't think that they have to unveil the tax, but that law now has been in place for several years, and it's working, and I don't think that it requires repeal. So I guess for me, as a position statement, I'd like to encourage the KAC not to do that this year, and I guess officially communicate that to them. And then finally, the KAC and LKM have linked arms, but a KAC issue ought to be that we ought to normalize our annexation laws. Kansas is an outlier on annexation, and for whatever reason, we're not addressing that, and I think that it's harder now that we've linked arms with LKM. But I think from a county perspective, we ought to have some ability to influence or impact annexation decisions differently than we do currently.
But how, I'm trying to get. Trying to get how, I got what word is, that we urge them to review and modernize their annexation laws.
With respect to unilateral annexation, we have to look at what other states do and normalize that. We are, if I understand correctly, we are an outlier. We're maybe the only state that's not one of a couple of states that does it the way we do it. We have no voice. Our constituents have no voice in their representation in the decisions of annexation. I think that's not, it disenfranchises their representation in the process. So anyways, it's heavily weighted towards the city, which is fine. I, if it doesn't change, that's fine, but I think in terms of the KAC platform issue, we ought to at least be looking at other states and try to normalize our state.
Commissioner?
So that's one, what you mentioned. Were you going to include a statement about Jim's first?
About Medicaid expansion?
Yeah.
And the tax lid. I don't think we're going to change the KAC's platform. I have 104 out of 105 counties, Pedro Panico's the only county that didn't support the tax lid, so, which I think is awesome. But I don't think we can necessarily change their mind on those positions, but we can tell them what we think about it.
I think they know what we think about it. I think we're one out of 105, and I don't think I would go up there and deliberately try to provoke an aggravation. They're not happy about it. I mean, why would we do that? We're not going to win it, so why get in that fight? And why get in this conversation?
My thought would be, it should be the top items on their list. It should be the top two items on their.
Maybe not. They think it is. 105, 104, 105 think it is. We might as well just fight it when that issue is. Besides that, you've already won that. I mean, I don't understand why you just go try to fight that again, just to say. Like I.
If we want them to take us serious on the other ones, we probably shouldn't.
No, I don't think so. But, I mean, I will be your loyal, faithful voter if we go up there, I mean, if you vote me in there, but I mean, it doesn't make good sense to me to start. We're not going to get a thing out. All we're going to do is try to pull. You guys are crazy.
Well.
I think you're just talking about expressing your opinion, and we're, we say we do, so. Yeah. We ought to be able to express our opinion. I'm just saying be smart. We can do it, but I'm just saying, I don't think it's smart. But if you sit forward, you think it's smart, then that's all right. I mean, what do you, if we say yes to this, what are you going to do?
I'm going to write something on another item, that we oppose Medicaid expansion, and we oppose repealing the tax lid.
And then you're going to do what with?
No, right.
For the KAC, so it doesn't mean that whoever's up there has a little against platform, they're just expressing their opinion, because they're going to get opinions from all the other counties, right?
Right. Yeah, this might not make it on their agenda.
Well, some of the others might not make it on their agenda either.
Right, right.
So we're just offering a period of suggestion, which.
First of all, I don't know, I haven't got the three yet, on either yes or no on the tax lid, but what about Medicaid expansion?
Well, I think you've got at least three, make both.
On that one?
I'm all open. I mean, that's what it's been historically.
Yeah, but the question is, how do we want to express that?
Yeah.
Have we already done it enough?
I think we have.
Well, this is going to be the KAC, there's a subcommittee that does this, right?
Right.
And they formed this as a full.
I'll word it in a neutral and benign way, so it doesn't tick them off any more than it would otherwise.
I'm not suggesting we take our position. I'm just saying, even a paragraph in a letter written to the board, saying we'd least understand our position, that I don't think this is, this is not the number one priority of the KAC. Very ineffective. By continuing it, because on their top of their list, they're continuing to be frustrated. They're never going to get anything done. It's not going to change. I really don't think it will. I'm proud of Jason Watkins, who got basically 100% of what we gave him last year done, because we were smart. We gave him things that could be accomplished. When you put things on there that can't be accomplished, or we know they're not going to be accomplished, it just makes us look like we're not really connected with the reality of our state. And I just think having this at the top of the list is not smart strategic. It's not a good strategic plan for KAC. So I would encourage him, you know, to understand our position, you know, maybe a letter, rather than putting this on a, you know, my opinion is to adopt our position, or just a letter to let him know that we would rather not see that at the top of the list, and it's just pointless.
Can we say that these that we've already talked about are legislative platforms, but then make a general statement that we think that they're not being effective trying to keep pushing the same agenda as the top item?
I assume you're talking about Medicaid expansion and tax lid with that. But what's the commission's view on the annexation law issue? I mean, do you want to include that on the things we're asking for as a reform of annexation laws?
Well, I'd be going, I was going to suggest that we do it all the considered, I thought at some point we're going to talk to her.
Well, we might do it ourselves.
Yeah, yeah.
But right now, the KAC has asked us, will we mount up to have a narrative, so.
I'm more disappointed in that problem.
Yeah, I think we need to look and see if we are an outlier, why we're an outlier, and what we can do though.
Alright, correct that. Alright. Anything else?
Anything else?
Yeah, if it's a statewide issue, all the other counties are there, I don't know.
Any other items?
Alright.
Thank you, Mr. CEO.
Thank you. Alright, we're ready for the chair.
Alright.
Good morning, and I am completely half bored with that daylight savings time, so thanks for running up that hill, Sheriff. Today, the sheriff and I wanted to show off our flex team, and so you're going to be hearing a presentation from them here shortly. What this flex team has borne out of is the lack of staffing in our facility, so we've. So, um, we've notoriously have had, um, a problem getting enough deputies, um, in the detention facility. So what we did is we started to look at the Googles and Facebooks of the world to see how they were, um, recruiting and retaining folks, um, into their organizations. And what we did also is we studied millennials, which by the way, I absolutely love because of their teamwork, um, abilities and concepts that they work under. Um, I think that it's, it's an incredible generation and I'm excited to see what they're going to do here in the future. But, um, one of the things that I've learned about them is that, uh, they will get anything done, just don't tell them when to get it done by. So the idea, the concept of a flexible schedule is kind of an interesting concept. We're actually going to be presenting it out at the large jail network out in Colorado here shortly, to the Maricopa Counties, the Cook Counties and other places like that. They're actually looking to us to see how we're doing things. Here's the concept. So we have a two-week, um, pay period. I take a number of physicians with inside the facility, assign the correct number of people to fill those positions, and then say, figure your schedule out. So if you're going to school on Tuesdays and Thursday mornings, you can go to school on Tuesdays and Thursday mornings, work second shift those two days. And then on Wednesday, Friday and Saturday, you work first shift. Um, the next pay period, you could, um, literally work, and you'd have to work this out with your teammates, but you could literally work two double shifts in a row, Sunday through Thursday, and then have nine days off without taking vacation time. Um, all of the positions would have to be filled twenty-four seven, but, um, it would allow them to set their own schedules. So that's what the flex team, um, is, is the concept behind it is going to be, and we're going to fully implement that after this next academy class. Um, what this team has morphed into is it's about one corporal and four deputies that are assigned to this team right now. And what it's morphed into is kind of a need to fill in certain positions right now. So, uh, they do linen exchange and they do, uh, the searches of, of the facility. So linen, when you have twelve hundred people in a facility, there's a lot of laundry to do. So they do an exchange of linen, um, in different pods on different days. So if you have a uniform, you get this new uniform, we take your old uniform. You have a blanket that needs to be washed, we take your blanket, we give you a new one. So that's linen exchange. Takes quite a bit of time. We also do searches. Um, I will tell you that in this presentation, um, the pictures that you are going to see, uh, will, um, concern you. Um, but I want to reassure you that, uh, we have several vendors in our facility. And, uh, I know, I've talked with one of them personally, who's in a lot of large jails throughout the United States. They say this is one of the safest, cleanest, best, best and most well-run facilities that that organization works in. So I want to reassure you that, uh, we have an awesome jail, we have awesome deputies who work there and do an incredible job. Um, but this is going to alarm you. This is a jail, okay? Things happen, and we have a lot of really good people to prevent bad things happening with what you're going to see. So, um, with that, I'm going to, uh, introduce the one and only and amazing Deputy Cannonhill. Jake?
One and only and amazing.
Good morning.
Yeah. Good morning, everybody. Okay, good morning. I have a list of some of our big fines that were done just in the last nine months. If you want to pass around, feel free to look through it. Uh, this is just a few.
Can we work this?
Yes, please.
Okay. I see that.
As notes, I will be brief. Thank you again for your time. Um, as she said, my name is Jake Cannonhill, and I, along with my team, are here to highlight some pretty cool stuff we've been up to this past year. We'd like to thank you all for having us. In November of last year, we at the jail created a designated response team known as the Flex Team. Our team currently consists of four deputies and one corporal, all of at least three years' experience with the agency, among the five of us. We train as a crisis intervention team using the instructor development program and are certified as defensive tactics instructors and also field training deputies. If any of you have a question about any of the pictures, this is all from our facility. Please raise your hand, we'll be glad to talk and explain about it. Also, terminology I'll be using is jail, so just, uh, if you have a question, don't, I mean, just raise your hand, we'll, we'll explain it. Our job as a team consists of several different functions within our facility. We collect and distribute the linen, we conduct cell searches, we assist in staffing by responding to codes and rearranging incompatible or combative inmates. We also locate, remove contraband and document our fines. The first task I'll talk about is why we collect and distribute the inmates' linen the way we do. Before, our team linen was passed out by the inmate workers or trustees, and a lot of it wound up missing or even destroyed. In the beginning, we saw a lot of inmates altering their extra jumpsuits into personal jewelry and selling it to each other for commissary. Often, the inmates who worked in the laundry room would report to us they didn't have enough linen to, to do an entire pod. This is, this lack of linen is crucial because if the inmates are not able to change their clothes at least once a week, it becomes a hygiene issue and therefore affects the safety and security of the facility. So when our team took on this task, we decided to revamp the process. Now, when we enter a pod to exchange linen, we go cell to cell. Before the inmates can change their clothes, we step in, examine their rooms, look for anything visible such as, uh, anything visible that's not allowed to have, such as chowtrays or contraband. Uh, this combination of cell inspections and linen control keeps inmates dressed according to our policies. This new way of transferring linen has also cut down on missing or altered jumpsuits by quite a bit. Since June of last year, the county has spent around twenty thousand dollars less on inmate linen and clothing. Live lessons, this is an easy way to remember how contraband gets in the facility or how it is generated. Um, L for lit, let in, contraband hidden from detection enters the facility from the outside. Because that can be as clever as small bits of narcotic-laced crayons used to, uh, used to create a drawing that goes through the mail. And let's not forget the bundles of narcotics that scare detection in a new community's anatomy. That's bundles of drugs, they get in without, yeah, section. And, and the inside, the origin of some contraband is found entirely within our concrete walls. This category of contraband is made from ordinary on-hand items. Things include paper-shaped clubs, recycled radio parts, or even fermenting juice, or hooch. Something of value does not always need to come from outside our walls. Visitors, some people cannot quite grasp the reason for so many rules in the operation of detention facility. Because of this, there is a small number of visitors who circumvent or rule to introduce contraband. And last, as detention professionals, we wish that staff corruption did not exist. Unfortunately, a small percentage of our colleagues have dabbled in this legal trade and we must remain vigilant. Whether bought, maneuvered or coerced, employee mules in the service of inmates deal a grievous blow to the structure of our security. The most time-consuming task of our team is also perhaps the most important to ensure operations are running smoothly. We work with our intelligence corporals on a day-to-day basis because they can locate and identify threats of contraband trafficking. On a broader scale, we found information and delivered it to the DA's office for convictions, and even assisted the FBI in procuring evidence that links cases in different states to one of our very own inmates. That was kind of a big deal for us. Since November, we found a repeating pattern when it comes to contraband. It is true that not all inmates will carry, will trade or carry contraband, it is also true that many will. This is a reality of the circumstances of incarceration. We cannot overlook anyone held in our facility, none of this is personal. Instead, we operate under the principle of, we go where the evidence leads us. Central County is the second most populated county in the state of Kansas, with the city of Wichita having the largest population overall. With around twelve hundred inmates, it makes sense for us all to ask the question, do we have contraband in our facility? The answer is unfortunately. Our job as the flex team is to remove dangerous items from circulation. Also, we confiscate things that may be, may not be dangerous but tradable. This removal of contraband leads to a safer facility for the inmates and staff. We reduce opportunities for inmates to gain power over one another through the trading of items for goods and services. And this task is not only necessary, but very often underestimated. When it comes to what we call hooch, or prison wine, all inmates need is a little knowledge, something that will ferment, and time. And here, they have plenty of all three. Not to mention sealable bags, bottles, sugar, bread, flavoring and water. This picture is of the inside of an inmate's pill. He had been in this room for more than two years. He was authorized KOPs, or keep-on-person medication, by the clinic, but he was actually, in fact, he was stockpiling them and selling them to other inmates in his section of the pod. If you look there, the big picture on the left, there's two hundred and fifty-two different pills that he had stockpiled over two years. The way KOP works is, uh, the clinic gives you your meds that you can keep in, in your cell, because, um, you're authorized for it. And then you're supposed to take it, and then once that runs out, you switch them out and they give you a new group. For some reason, this guy was able to stockpile two, over two hundred and fifty meds. And if you look on the top right picture, we walk in and that's what we saw, that was the first picture we took. The sack of cups, which we're not allowed to have, but he had stacked them up to look pretty casual. So if a deputy's walking by doing cell inspections, he's thinking, oh, he just has a bunch of cups. Uh, after we got in there, though, we, we took them apart, two, over two hundred and fifty pills.
Just left. Did you say he was in there two and a half years?
Two years.
Two years? What's he doing in there two years? I thought mainly, on our guys, are they less than a year?
Usually, yes. Well, we have had a few that have been sentenced to jail time, and he was one of them. At two years, I don't know if it was longer. Uh, if it was supposed to be longer, I just know that two years, we got in and found this and we moved him.
A lot of, a lot of times, about six percent right now of our current inmates are in on, um, alleged homicide charges. So those cases generally have a really long time before they go to trial. So it's not unusual for some of those cases to, for, for those inmates to be there more than one year. Uh, we also have an individual right now, and I don't know if that's been fixed, but, or been reviewed, but, um, there's an individual that was sentenced to eleven one-year consecutive sentences in our facility. Um, so technically, he could be there for a year, uh, eleven years, um, based off of a PFA charge. And it was done, if, if, if someone's sentenced to prison, um, they can get good time. Um, but if they're in the county jail, they do not. So he would do all eleven years. Uh, the judge was sending a, um, a statement, and I don't disagree with it, but, uh, it's not unusual to have an inmate in our facility more than a year.
This picture is of the metallic rings that were hanging in the showers in every pod. After we found a shank made from this aluminum material, uh, we noticed there were probably five to six potential shanks hanging in every pod and, and all the showers. So what we did is we did a risk assessment, and we went through, and we removed every metallic ring that we could find, again, making it safer for everyone. We are correct to be suspicious. Contraband is pervasive and is dangerous no matter the form. When we do not find contraband in a search, it does not mean we were necessarily wrong. Whether we trust our gut or look strictly in suspicion, the action which follows is essential. Both sets of pictures here are from the same inmate. He was making metal shanks and selling them to other inmates. After he was relocated to a maximum custody pod, he created these concealable shanks and admitted to having three targets in mind, three different inmates of his section. We searched the cell during a routine pod search, removed him from the pod, isolated both of we, what he calls his pokers. He, uh, this, this guy, he, um, on the left there, he had a medical bracelet that wasn't authorized. You can see that long metal, but almost like a pipe, but it's flat, and he can just slide it in. He had sharpened the tip of it, and he was walking around the pod, um, with that. And on the right, he had taken a, an outlet from the wall, pulled it off, uh, folded it over and sharpened it to a point, very sharp. He made a sheath for it, had a toilet paper and torn linen, and he, uh, yeah, when I escorted him down from the clinic, he said that he had three, um, three guys that he was going to shank. There is no doubt that inmates have ample time to plot concealment tactics, but we have advantages of training, communication and a fresh start every day. Still, since we cannot be everywhere all the time, we need to utilize these advantages whenever we can. The safety of so many depends on this. Inmates will create shanks for various reasons, but the three that we found is for personal safety, to hold for other inmates, or on the rare occasion, like that last slide, they have actual targets in mind. This one is a, another concealed shank. This is, um, in the dayroom. When I say that, that means that the inmates have their cells for the dayroom, they like to store shanks for contraband in the dayroom. That way, we can't pin it on them allegedly. But this guy had taken his eyeglasses, broke it off, uh, broke the tip off, placed a, a sharp metal object in, in the end of the, of the shaft, and then he was able to put that earpiece back on to kind of conceal it. And this was found at the top of the dayroom door of the bathroom. So he knew where, if he, if he had a beef, he could go over and grab it and he would have that weapon right there. Jail tattooing is creating and displaying tattoos in an environment of incarceration. Inmates may convey gang membership, code, or hidden meanings of origin or even criminal beef. Lack of sterile equipment leads to health risks, causes infection or disease from jail-made needles like hepatitis and AIDS. This is actually a pretty common thing we have going on. People, people can make tattooing equipment out of almost anything. They use charcoal from the pencils, uh, and they say staples is another big thing that we're finding, and they've stapled an older legal paper. So they take the staples and they just have time, and they sit there and they can, onto the, the picture in the bottom middle, uh, he did that to himself, and they, they like to do that, so, for several reasons. This is fairly new. After the topic of crime mapping came last, we spoke to Colonel Pollak about how this needs to be applied within our facility. He showed us what stats he had with the jail, but also how they're not currently being utilized. We're hoping to begin working with his intelligence group and creating a system where the flex team can monitor this data to profile inmates' traffickers, traffickers predict high-risk situations and even prevent them from recurring. In just under a year, we've learned so much about contraband trafficking, preserving evidence and correctly filing cases for convictions. There is however, a lot more we can learn that would benefit the safety and security of the facility. Some of our future requests, we would like to complete our crime mapping initiative in implementing an intelligence-led supervision, or ILS, facility-wide. Uh, learning more from intelligence to correctly handle and process evidence to be able to lift fingerprints off jail-made contraband and communication. Gain, uh, we want to gain advanced training in drug identification, uh, specialized training on potentially hazardous materials such as fentanyl, and also grow, we want to grow the relationships with outside agencies, which will continue to make our community safer. That's all I have. Are there any questions?
Thanks, ladies. I have a couple of questions. Seriously, so I see in some of this there tobacco is a contraband. Are, are the inmates allowed to, to use tobacco in some way, or are they smoking anywhere?
They are not allowed in our facility. A lot of inmates that we shipped out to, uh, Mead County, there's a, there's a tobacco-free section and a tobacco section. And our inmates are supposed to be in the tobacco-free section. However, um, in, in that jail, it can get around. An inmate came back a couple of weeks ago with a full pack of cigarettes and his out-of-counter property.
So again, would he, would they actually try to light that somehow?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
How would he light it?
They would use it with the outlets, like in the gym. If you look in the gyms of, of all the jails, the outlets are completely burned off because they take little things and they put them in there, and then, I mean, it, of course, it, I've seen cigarettes lit that way. And they make the hand roll, whatever they can get their hands on. Uh, the last person we did in, in Pod Eleven, they were smoking teabags. And we walked in and the entire, the entire pod, you walk in, you can smell it, and all the inmates were laughing because they knew why we were there. So we walked in and we're like, okay, let's go, so.
Have, we had a history of inmates using objects to violently attack other inmates? Does that happen? I don't ever hear about that, it was very difficult.
It's, you know, if, if you start finding a lot of shanks in jails because they don't feel safe. Um, normally, it's going to be inmate on inmate, it's not going to be inmate on staff, um, unless there's a specific beef with, with a particular staff member. So we have not had any of that, uh, recently, and the, the team is going to prevent that from happening.
Thanks for coming to present, and you did a great job, I appreciate what you do.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I appreciate you coming to present, uh, so do we need to put covers and take the outlets off, or what do we need to do?
Several suggestions.
That's, that's a code issue, so, yeah, change the code and we can, we can do that. But, um, we have certain cells where we have to have outlets because of, uh, like CPAP machines and different things like that. But, yeah, it'd be my preference to take pretty much all of these electrical outlets, for some strange reason, out of cells. That would be great. But we had to have them because of code.
Well, we can change the code.
Amen.
So then we can see the-
There we go.
Is it the county code or is it city code?
It's city code?
Yeah, mutual code.
That's all, that's all.
If the case will be in, exempt out of jail.
So would the city have to bill them? It's county property now, right?
You can, I know they don't like to enforce in our building, so it doesn't mean that, that's part of changing the code, I would think they would have to change it also. It's exempt out of jail, so we, you know, the electric. Uh, that's imposed, you're right.
Drive a motion. That's ending. Thank you, I do appreciate.
Even if you can't take the outlets out, can we just turn the circuit breakers off? Let's see if we can find them to code, we just don't have any power for those.
We'll work that. Thank you. What else you have, Mr. Manix?
That's it.
Very good, well, we have a busy morning yet, we're going back over and figure out what's hooked or sent up. Thanks, all.
All right.